Evening. The December the 21st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Longview is now called to order. Commissioner Dublau will lead us in invocation. Please rise.
We thank you for another day. Thank you for having me and opportunities, our Lord. We pray for your wisdom, your guidance. And just pray for your blessing over us as we leave tonight as well. And just pray a blessing over the people in this season. And just thank you for your mercy and your praise, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting in November. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? Are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move we accept them as, Brittany?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. We've reached the citizen comment portion of our meeting. This portion of citizen comment are the comments that are made other than the public hearing items that we have on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak on an item that's on the agenda, please wait until that time to speak. Please begin by stating your name and address for the public record when you come to the microphone. Do we have any public comments tonight? Citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The commission also considers plaits. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. First from staff, then the applicant, and then the general public, and that includes those in support of and in opposition to the request. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the commission, please begin by stating your name and address and try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on the request. And the zoning request and the Planning and Zone Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on January the 13th. Our first item is regular agenda item A, and Angela will introduce it.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application SW 21-07 filed by Stacy Lammers for a waiver to the City of Longview UDC subdivision regulations, Article E, Section 1.08, which requires sidewalks to be constructed as part of the development site plan approval for lots three through five, Block 1109 Evan Hills Estates subdivision located at 314 Magnolia Lane. The applicant is proposing an addition to the current facility and was requesting a waiver to the sidewalk requirement for approximately 275 feet of frontage along Magnolia Lane. The City of Longview's comprehensive plan was adopted in 2015. During that process, sidewalks were a topic of concern among many of the citizens within Longview. Sidewalks are referenced throughout that comprehensive plan document as well as throughout the pedestrian access study, which noted that sidewalks needed to be provided as access to transit stations and key amenities. Due to all that public input on sidewalks and bicycle lanes, the City of Longview embarked on a bicycle and pedestrian plan study funded by the City of Longview MPO. This plan was adopted in 2018 and provides staff with a guide on types of sidewalks needed along each corridor. The vision of this plan is to provide children a safe place to walk or bike to school, allow people from all walks of life the opportunity to access jobs and shopping while leading physically active and healthy lifestyles, and attract new businesses and residents to our area. With all that public input, the city adopted a sidewalk requirement in the UDC that was adopted earlier this year. The UDC states that the decision maker shall not authorize a subdivision waiver that would constitute a violation of or in conflict with any other ordinance, code, regulations, master plan, or the comprehensive plan of the City of Longview. Granting this waiver would be in conflict of many of these plans and ordinances. As stated in the UDC, sidewalks, pedestrian pathways are required as part of the subdivision plat approval, development site plan approval, or construction plans to help the city achieve the following. Promoting mobility, health, safety, and welfare of residents, property owners, and visitors to the city, and to implement objectives and strategies of the comprehensive plan. Improve the safety of walking by providing separation from motorized transportation and improving travel surfaces for pedestrians. Improving public welfare by providing an alternative means of access to transportation and social interaction, especially for children, other citizens without personal vehicles, or those with disabilities. Facilitate walking as a means of physical activity, recognized as important provider of health benefits. As part of the bond package in 2011, Magnolia Lane was widened to four lanes with a sidewalk on the north side of this street. Magnolia Lane is a minor arterial roadway, which sidewalks are required on these roadways along principal arterials, minor arterials, and collector straits as defined in the UDC. Magnolia Lane is a transitional corridor and has begun redeveloping. As development occurs, these properties, on these properties, sidewalks will be installed to provide the connectivity. Granting a waiver would be in direct conflict of the comprehensive plan, the bicycle and pedestrian plan, and the UDC. It does not appear that the applicant has met the criteria for a subdivision waiver to the sidewalk requirement as referenced in the pages within your packet, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of the staff?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to do it after or before, if there's someone speaking.
Why don't we have the applicant? Is the applicant present, and do you have anything you'd like to add or would like to speak on this request? So please come to the microphone. Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Stacy Lammers with Hugman Design Build at 1105 Judson Road. We are the person that's going to be doing the design build on this property. The way we feel about it is that there is sidewalk that runs from Judson to McCann along the whole north side of Magnolia. The property on either side of Casa Flora is residential. On the code, as far as on residential properties, you only have to have sidewalk on one side of the street. The sidewalk on her property is going to go to the residence on the right and stop, to the residence on the left of the property and stop. All the rest of the properties down Magnolia going towards Judson Road are residential until you get to the vape shop that fronts Judson Road with the fire station on the other side of the residence on the west side of Casa Flora. So putting sidewalks in is going to go basically from one residence to the next, and unless those change to commercial properties and are rezoned and torn down and changed into commercial properties, sidewalk will never continue on that. So those sidewalks will go to nowhere as far as for any pedestrian or biker to be able to use them. I don't know why they would ever jump off of the sidewalk that's running down the north side of Magnolia to go on the sidewalk across from her to go to grassy area. So we're asking for a waiver to waive having to do sidewalk in the area that she has her property that will basically not tie into another sidewalk for many, many years to come, probably.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of the applicant at this point? Any questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Angela, the, on the single family, the zoning does not require a single family to put a sidewalk in if they did an addition or made a change to one of those properties?
So the code says along local residential streets. This is not a local street. This street is classified as our transportation plan. This road is classified as a minor arterial roadway. So even though there are residentially zoned property along this roadway, it's a minor arterial, which is a commercial roadway, and so it does require sidewalks on both sides.
If any of those single family do anything, they would have to put a sidewalk in on theirs as well?
So if one of the single family were to, say, redevelop, yes, they would be required to do sidewalks. If somebody took a piece of property, subdivided it into two, and made two lots into it, they would need to put sidewalks in. Or if they rezoned it, they would need to put sidewalks in.
And follow-up question. So on the north side, as part of that widening the lane, the city, or I assume the city, they paid for the sidewalk to be put in along the north side of the road?
Yes.
Why didn't they do the same on the south side of the road?
They prob, most likely, and Alton, feel free to, but most likely they put on the north side of the road because that's where most of the commercial development is. I can go to the zoning map. If you look at the zoning map, and at that time, we didn't also have a sidewalk requirement. But if you look at the zoning map, most of, well, and there's not one further zoomed out, but most of the commercial development is located on the north side. There's an apartment, two apartment complexes. There is a beauty salon, and there's a bank. Most of all that is located on the north side. There is the vape shop on the south side, but...
It doesn't seem fair that the people on the north side didn't have to pay to have it put in, and the people on the south side do?
And so what you were saying was, at the time when the north side sidewalk was put in, this was already a minor arterial roadway at the time?
That is correct.
But there was not the requirement to have sidewalks on both sides?
That is correct.
Because the UDC wasn't fully enacted or whatnot?
That is correct.
Okay, because I mean, I drove by earlier and I was looking, in order to implement sidewalks, you know, on this road all the way, it's going to be quite a logistical nightmare because you've got manholes, you've got power poles, you've got all kinds of stuff that, you know, it's going to be, not just this property, but the other properties down the line, this sidewalk is going to go like...
I mean, we do have manholes. I mean, we have manholes. I mean, if you can see in this picture, we have manholes in our existing sidewalk. That's...
The picture right there, that's just how they implemented the design inlet, the drainage inlet with the sidewalk, just to incorporate all that, you know, without having to go around it. There may be areas you have to go around it in order to work with the grade, but that's an acceptable, you know, alternate there.
Right, it's acceptable, but it's also costly, probably, to do something like that. And I know that, like, undue hardship, financial doesn't count, per se, but I'm just wondering, like, that's probably development-wise, a pretty costly solution to manhole, correct?
Well, the inlet that's in question on the application, that's already there. That was put in under Magnolia Lane. Then they would just have to tie into that on each side of that. They wouldn't need to go down in that drainage area and go around it.
So it would attach to the existing...
So that, so that was, that was my question was, because we, you know, we dealt with this on McCann Road, North McCann, and there was a lot of empathy there because when she was doing the neighborhood, you know, she was developing that neighborhood there on the east, it's the east side of McCann, north of, whatever, north of, anyway.
North of...
Yeah, well, you know, there was a fire station and a lot of, lot of things on both sides of the roads that would preclude it in the future and probably never happened. So you kind of, you know, had a little empathy there on that situation. But on this one, I guess what I'm getting at is, I was thinking initially that it would stop and then start on either side of that. So it's going to go right over that manhole where that is. That would be, that would be the width of the sidewalk, right there.
That's correct.
So...
Those inlets are typically five foot. Our sidewalks are only required to be four foot.
Because I was looking at the one, the one thing on here, it says, "Along local residential streets, the city engineer may authorize exceptions to these requirements due to topography, unique site constraints, or low-density development." And then I thought, well, okay, if you're going to stop and start it on either side of the ditch of that drainage, then maybe that would fall in that category, but if it's going to go right over, I mean...
That's what we did on the north side of the street. Those weren't existing. Those were built with Magnolia Lane. So it was just tied in. But like I said, it's, the topography, the street's primarily, it's pretty flat.
Yeah, and I, you know, I hate to see it because there's so many people that aren't aware of this. And then when you start to do construction or, you know, you don't realize that this is going to be a requirement. And when we, the kind of the precedent, we, it's kind of been set in the past where we've, you know, they were doing, on that project, they had the development commercial to the south, and then they had a fire station and some other land that may never, maybe many, many, many years before it's developed.
We're actually talking to somebody.
What's that?
We're talking to somebody about developing some land over there, and they're going to have to put sidewalks in.
Yeah, so, you know, it's hard to say you have to do it and then not in others. I mean, I would hate to have a piece of property where I was under the belief they probably wouldn't, you know, that's probably one of them, you know, it'd be a long time, but, you know.
You know, I want to say, Mike, there, like, if, the problem is, there's the code, and then there's what makes sense. So to me, it doesn't make sense, but we either got to enforce the code or not, like...
And you look at Magnolia Lane, I mean, it is transitioning. Y'all, I mean, y'all, y'all on Planning and Zoning Commission have seen some zoning requests come through on Magnolia Lane. You know, it's four lanes, you know, it's a transitional area. I believe the future lane use map even designates it as retail, retail office in this area. It is a transitional corridor, and it is transitioning.
And part of us, part, well, part of what we, you know, we all, I think everyone's pro-growth and want to move the city forward the right way, and at the same time, you hate seeing someone get hit with such a significant amount of money. I'm, you know, I know what concrete costs. It's not cheap.
Well, and then is there, Angela, but so what you're saying is, what are currently houses on Magnolia, you foresee in the relatively near future that those houses will become commercial properties like retail and all those, at which point there will be, you know, the requirements for them also to make the sidewalk, and then they will start connecting and whatnot?
It is a likely possibility, yes.
So what's the likelihood of the fire station putting in a sidewalk on their end, too?
It's a good question.
And I mean, I'm just saying, well, I'm just saying...
Angela, for clarification, this body really does not have the authority unless they can show just cause to okay this.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Direct conflict.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Angela, with the Magnolia provided the four lanes, why didn't the city put in sidewalks on both sides?
So the city was not required to.
This is pre-UDC.
And, yeah, I mean, it is, the, yes, the bond election was passed. It was pre-UDC. You know, the city wasn't even required to put any sidewalks in and put sidewalks on the north side because the north side is where all that commercial development was happening. You have apartments on one end, and this was, I think, even before the other apartments came in. But they weren't required to put in any sidewalks at all, and they, they went ahead and put in sidewalks on that north side.
Just as a point of clarification, the houses on that side of the street, even if they remodeled a house extensively, they would not have to add the sidewalk. They would only...
That is correct, yes. They would not, if you, if you totally gutted that house interior, you know, the interior, you would not have to put in sidewalks or even did an addition. But if you split, like, if you took a lot and split it into two, you would have to put sidewalks in.
Or redeveloped it into another use?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But so why did they have to? Because it's commercial?
Hers is commercial, and she is doing an addition that requires side plan review.
Oh, okay, so it's a side plan review. Okay, I thought you just said if the house did an addition, it wasn't required for them to put in sidewalks.
Yeah, so a house, if they did an addition, they would not be required sidewalks because it doesn't go through, yes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, okay.
Going back to Pat's point on, you know, our authority, the part of this on the consideration factors is existing uses of land in the vicinity. So since it is residential next to us, and they wouldn't be required to do that if it maintains residential, would that not still fall under a consideration for this board?
So, I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, I mean, going back to Pat's, you know, comment on, we really don't have the authority to waive that, but one of the consideration factors is existing uses of land in the vicinity, and the existing use of the land in the vicinity is residential, which likely, as long as it's residential, will not be required to do a sidewalk. Does that not fall into that consideration?
If it was residential, we wouldn't be, wouldn't be here.
I know, I know, if this was residential, but everything adjacent to it is residential, so it might not ever connect.
But what, like, kind of what Angela alluded to, it looks most likely heading east, or, you know, parts of that are going to come up at some point to be commercial.
If there are no additional comments or questions, we're going to open the public hearing. Is that okay with you all? We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this request that has not already spoken? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the request? If so, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Make a motion that we deny the request.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. I need a second.
I second the motion to approve.
Just a moment.
Let's clarify how we vote.
We have a motion here to deny the request.
To deny.
The request is to not put the sidewalks in?
No, the request is to waiver.
To waiver, so we're either denying the waiver or we're voting for the waiver to approve it?
Just deny the waiver is mine.
Yours is to deny the waiver, and yours, you modified it to approve the waiver. How do we handle...
I think we need to see if there's a second to the, to the original motion first.
Is there a second? Do you want to restate? Pat, please restate.
We're just making a motion based on the information that we have here, that we deny this request.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to deny the request. We will call for the vote. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor of denying the request, correct me if I'm saying this incorrectly, please say aye or raise your hand. We have four.
Okay.
And I haven't voted yet.
Mm-hmm.
All, all right, where are we? We have...
We got the, we got the nay.
Four, we have the majority vote.
Four to, four to deny, and then those in opposition? Could you, yeah, raise your hand?
You in opposition?
Two.
We have two in opposition.
Okay.
So the end result is, we have denied the request.
That is correct.
Yeah, are there any questions? Any additional comments on that?
It's unfortunate. It's one of those where you really don't have a leg to stand on to vote for it when we've set a precedent and it's in the code and...
We had a similar case where we denied not very long ago, a piece of property out in the country.
Well, my thing is, like what you just said, why have a code if we're not going to follow it? And even though right now, this doesn't really not make that much sense, like, it is what we need to do for the future. Although I would like to also make sure or see the fire station put in a sidewalk. Like, if it's city property, we should at least do our part, you know? That's just my thoughts.
I agree.
Thank you, everyone, for your participation. We appreciate it. That's a difficult one. Moving forward with regular agenda item B, Angela, will you please introduce it?
Yes, ma'am. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 21-19 filed by LISD requesting a rezone from multifamily one and office zoning to light commercial zoning district for approximately 60 acres of abstract 258 PP Rain survey tract 36, Section 4, located at 201 Northeast Loop 281, also known as 201 East Homleson Parkway. So the applicant is requesting the rezone for this property to allow for pole signs. Currently, the zoning district that the school is in, multifamily, and a little sliver of it is actually zoned office, does not allow for pole signs. It only allows for monument signs. So they are requesting the rezone to allow for two, two pole signs in addition to the monument sign that they have at that intersection. And as you can see, looking at the zoning map, there is commercial property to the east of this property. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses and does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
The signs that they're trying to put up, like, how tall and all that, are they, are they going to be digital? Are they going to be static?
So they will be digital. They will be compliant with our sign ordinance, but they will be, I believe, they're going to propose, I think, three digital signs, two digital pole signs, and I think they're maybe doing a conversion to the monument sign to add an additional component.
Is the applicant present? Would you please come to the microphone and give us your name and address? I have two speaker cards.
Matthew Prosser, 1705 Rainbow Drive, Director of Communications, Longview Independent School District. And as Angela stated, we're going to be building some digital pole signs there, the monument sign to renovate the current monument sign, and two additional signs, one at the corner of Hawkins Parkway and one further down the loop. And any questions?
Would you, would you clarify those two locations again, please?
So there's going to be one down on the intersection of Hawkins Parkway and Airline, I believe that is, and then the other one will be further down the loop near the high school campus.
Kind of over by the Chili's.
So there's one on the backside, then, on Hawkins?
Correct.
And Airline. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other one is on the loop and...
Angela, can you go to that? It's kind of over by that, that second entrance that always called the Chili's entrance, kind of.
The intersection there by Chili's and stuff further down the loop, but still on the high school campus.
Yeah.
And what's the height?
Oh, I can't remember the height off the top of my head, I'm sorry, but it will meet the sign ordinance requirement. I think, I want to say the height was like 35 feet?
Yeah, we've worked with Angela and the city to make sure that every aspect of this project fits within the compliance.
Is that taller than the gas station to the east, that sign?
I don't know what the height of the gas station sign is. It is fairly tall, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
In the packet, it had also a picture of a pylons, I mean, a billboard, which really doesn't apply here. And that was used as an example, the Austin Bank sign on that billboard.
Staff was just taking pictures of what was around it. They, we weren't...
I get it.
Taking pictures of, yeah, the billboard sign, but...
What do you guys want to do that for? Just for informational purposes, to get...
Yeah, for student parent information, community information. We have a lot of community partners as well as city, local organizations and things like that. Just general community interest and, again, student promotion, stuff like that.
And you will not be selling advertising or putting advertising on there other than what's related to the school?
No, no selling of advertising.
Thank you.
How large would the sentence be?
Don't have the figures committed to memory, but I can provide that to you. I can provide full schematics to you guys.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Prosser? Thank you. Do we have a second speaker card, Mrs. Rich?
Hello. I just saw the little sign that said...
Give us your name and address first, please.
I'm Karen Rich, 1106 Still Meadow Lane.
They need that for the record, so, thank you. Go ahead.
I just saw the sign with the request for the zoning change, for the, all of the 60 acres there to be light commercial rather than what it's originally designated as, as residential. residential and, and multi, and office. And so, I love those trees in front of Longview High School, I think it's beautiful, it's like a breath of fresh air, you know, you're driving down the loop and it's all congested and it's beautiful there. And, and so, and I was sad to see the other side go, you know, and they had, went through all kinds of machinations to put all those, those restaurants there and really congest that area, the loop, and, and so, and they didn't leave that, those streets there, you know, and make them have a setback, they, they just, you know, plowed in there, and so it really detracted from the original beauty of Longview, I think.
I agree.
And so I was just here to, hoping to preserve the original beauty of Longview. The high school is still there, you know, with those, with those trees, and I was, I was just fearful that if you changed it to light industrial, you would get more of the same as, as cost the loop and endanger the beauty that we have in those trees, and, and just, it makes Longview unique to some of the cities that don't have that, as I said, breath of fresh air as you go down the loop. I, I know, I was actually one of, one of the viewers at the city council meeting when they approved the, the sign for Oak Forest, and that was supposed to be a beautiful, lovely, you know, sign that was going to be attractive, and they came out with a billboard, you know, just like Austin Banks. And I know that there's an ordinance that, I'm really not familiar with all the fine points of the law, but Lady Bird Johnson had those, you know, she was anti-billboard, and so you could only have a billboard every so many feet, and so that one just got squeezed in between two major billboards, and, and so, and then all of a sudden, they had commercial advertising. I think it's back to only advertising the, the country club now, but it hasn't in the past. Anyway, I think that Longview should stick to the original plan to, to have it be where it's residential and not, not zoned industrial. And we have to think of cities such as the Woodlands that have plans to leave stands of beautiful trees as part of a master plan, and they, there's lots of cities now, McKinney and others, that, you know, have to have short signs so that it looks pretty, and we already have the monument sign, and I, I think those are nice. I mean, it's really hard to find a gas station in the Woodlands, but, you know, it looks, it looks beautiful. And then I would have, have you think of the future of Longview, and I know allowing these out-of-town businesses to develop all these things, now this is just for, they might help for a little while, but eventually, they, they leave town and move on, and so I just, we want to think of the long-term beautification of Longview, as is, when they put in Lowe's, they put in the holding pond, you know, but they didn't require anything pretty, and so now we have our beautiful hotels overlooking this ugly, you know, fenced weed area, so I think we need to always consider the beauty, and that's all I had.
Thank you, Mrs. Rich, and I apologize, I should have opened the public hearing, and that, these records will go under the public hearing section, thank you, Mrs. Rich. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition or in support? Yes, sir?
I would like to address those concerns because they're absolutely valid. One of the most important aspects of this project was, we determined to move the location of the signs that are going to be on the loop further, closer to the campus because of, we didn't want them to impact those trees, because, you know, I'm, I'm very fond of them, and I know the administration leadership of the high school campuses as well, you know, we love the natural beauty of the high school campus surrounded by, by the trees there, it's, it's really iconic, and we don't want to lose that either. And so part of the reason why the sign on the loop is pushed as far down the loop as it is, was so there was minimal impact to the trees that are, that are currently there. So I just want to make sure that, that that's on the record, that the environmental impact was a huge part of this project that we did take into serious consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Prosser, does anybody have any questions of him? Any additional comments in support or in opposition? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you. Appreciate everyone's participation. The last item on the agenda is a staff update. Angela, will you please provide an update of the city council action on the previous zoning items from the November 11 city council meeting?
Yes, ma'am, the Utzman Farmhouse that was requesting the local landmark designation was approved by city council.
Thank you. This concludes today's meeting, and closing, and adjourning, we'll wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you for your attendance.